You're the, oh, don't you worry about it. Nancy, is this yours? Can we take it?
Yeah, you go ahead. Yeah, that's it.
Oh, I see. I see what you're asking for. I don't think I understood. I don't think I read your question, perhaps, last night in my head.
Right.
I got you. Mayor, that should have been live.
Start now with TJ.
TJ.
Then it was twice.
Okay.
And being last.
Okay.
Me and Tom Hurst, Tom Hurst, the other man.
Okay. I'll just.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yo, hey, man, if you have any questions, you can go get in.
We're a four horn.
And you were hurt from a, she does not feel up, so I, I. I'm talking well today. I didn't talk to you yesterday. She kind of migrated two ways and just be stressed.
It wasn't terrible. Seen of, uh.
Okay.
It doesn't. You know, it works. Steve.
You get good, you're on your water.
Yeah.
Good evening. Uh, want to thank everyone for being here tonight, uh, whether you're in this room or, I don't know if there's any over player or if you're watching at home. First of all, I want to say, um, in, there should be some cards, index cards that I think have been passed out. If you don't have one and would like one, please raise your hand. Uh, they're, uh, for, for you to write down some questions and it will be collected and then, uh, the questions will be answered at the end of, uh, of this meeting. Um. My name is Lash Daltre, now representing Ward Five, Rock Mountain City Council's ruling today by help of Tom Harris. He currently serves as our Mr. Tim and represents Ward Six. And then further down to the left is, uh, Ward Seven Representative Jabar's Walker. Um, we are here with staff to share the facts as we understand them today. This is a fluid situation and details may change as we learn more. Each of us is committed to keeping you up to date in the coming weeks and months. If any details do change, and I do know that there's a website and I'm sure City Manager Daniels will tell you more about that. It just went live today. Um, first, let me be clear, the city is not broke. But we are facing serious cash flow issues that need immediate attention. The Rocky Mount City Council operates under a council manager, form of government, majority rules, and we all share responsibility for outcomes. Looking back, it is easy to see things we wish had been done differently. Each of us did ask a lot of detailed questions, but we still ended up in this situation. Let me say this again. The city council is responsible for this current situation. The buck stops here, as they say. Both Councilman Harris and Jabar's Walker agree. We're not going to waste time pointing fingers. We're focused on a path forward to a solution and will work with our colleagues to stay focused on that. According to our mayor Sandy Robertson, the state auditor is already has a team in Rocky Mount conducting a forensic audit. We are grateful they are here and we hope their review is comprehensive, looking at every aspect of the city's finances over multiple years. Their work is fully independent and will be made public once completed. If it turns out that the review is not as comprehensive as needed, or there are areas that require further investigation, we will support bringing a third party team in to complete the task. At this point, we do not believe there has been any wrongdoing, but the facts will only be clear once the audit is complete. We won't answer soon. It is also important to note that every city budget presented by the city manager and his team to this council was balanced and did not indicate cash flow issues. We now know the numbers were not accurate. Information request of our council has not always been provided despite numerous requests. Since I've been on this council, we have not received a balance sheet from any city manager until now. Unbelievable. That's one thing that will change moving forward. We have the right person in the city manager position to ensure that happens. Finally, I want to acknowledge that this means, what this means for our community. We know these issues affect real people, you and our staff. We wish there were better alternatives to the cost savings measures and revenue generating actions being considered, but as municipality, our options are limited. We remain committed to working together as one city to face this challenge, learn from it, move forward responsibly. Um, and before we turn this over to, uh, our city manager Elton Daniels and our finance director Cheryl Spivey, uh, I think, uh, Councilman or Mayor Tom Harrison, Jabar's Walker would like to make a few comments. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Councilman Daltre. It's, uh, your opening remarks were well prepared and well stated. I have been on the council for three years and all of my life I relied on financial statements and other information in order for me to make decisions. Looking back, I've done a lot of reflection. There are a couple of questions I wish I had asked. But we are now here to talk about the future. And I want to stress to all of you, if I continue to serve as Ward Six representative and as a member of the seven body city council, working with the mayor and with the manager and his staff, we are going to be open and united in how we move forward and making sure that all of you, all of you will be kept informed. We must have timely and accurate information. And I have been, uh, pleased with the efforts that have been made by Manager Daniels in the recent weeks. And I feel confident that with Manager Daniels, of course, the financial director, Cheryl Spivey, we will have financial information to you as soon as we receive it because you are, you want that information. We failed to provide you that information. Again, I apologize for not answer, not asking some questionings, but I did ask a lot and ask for other things and I think things will be different in the future and I thank you.
So I think like the other council people said even on Monday night, they got echo the same thing tonight. If I could have done some things different, we probably would have asked a few more questions totally different than what we did. You went off what you had in front of you, went back and studied it. You talked to everybody, discussed it. Decisions we made, you thought were the right ones, you thought was moving in facts. So moving forward, you know, we got to do something a little bit different, I think. Um, what has maybe gave us, put us in the condition we're in is finance director piece, but I think we have the right people on the team to make the right decisions. Also, I think the council's moving forward since we found this information, we put a plan together. LGC is on the ground, state auditor is on the ground, everybody's communicating, trying to do the best we can to make the best, best decision to get out of the situation we are in. Like everybody's been saying, I think it's time. We here tonight to address, I guess, the rumors that are not true, try to get the facts and we're moving the facts. And I'm not here to tell my side. I'm here to try to see what we can do as a collective group to move forward and help Rocky Mount move forward. Because I know it's a lot out there. We want to get out, try to get out in front of the best we can with the facts. That's all you can do. I'm not here to tell my side. I'm here to just rewrite history and try to get it right from here going forward. So I turn it over to the city manager and finance director.
Thank you, uh, council members, and thank you for the confidence that you have in me and my team. Uh, you do have my word that, uh, you will get reports in a timely fashion and you also have my word that we'll present that information to the public as well. With that said, we'll get into the presentation. So this is just a little bit of background about myself and my colleague Cheryl. If you don't know me, my name is Elton Daniels. I've been with the city for just over six years. Uh, a large part of that, uh, time here in the city has been, uh, as assistant city manager. And during my role as assistant city manager, I was over at the operations. So Parks and Rec, Public Works, Water Resources, uh, engineering, things of that sort. Uh, and then April, the council promoted me to assistant, I mean, to city manager from assistant. I have about seventeen years in local government, uh, management here in North Carolina. Uh, part of my career was working for the state. I was a magistrate judge in Russell County. I've been a manager for most of my career. I'd say all of my career is of a brief stint here in Rocky Mountain when I was hired originally as the Parks and Rec Director. Uh, Cheryl has, uh, thirty-five years of government experience. Uh, some of that has been in Virginia, a majority of that has been in North Carolina. She actually retired from North Carolina and then moved to Virginia for a few years, but I was able to convince her to come back. So, uh, thank you, Cheryl, for coming back. Uh, she's been, uh, the assistant director of the local government commission, uh, from nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand in the fiscal management division. She's worked in Cary, Wade County, uh, Fayetteville, uh, as well as some, uh, public school systems in, uh, Virginia. So enough about us. Let's get into the presentation. Earlier, you heard the council members mention that we're going to do our best to try to provide, uh, information to the public. So you'll notice that some of the slides tonight have small print. As of today, you can go to this website and look at the same information that we have and we'll continuously update the website with information as we get it. So that website is rmfinancialoutlook.com. Keep in mind that some of the projections that we talk about are projections. They are not factual information. It's something that we're projecting. As we get new information, we will update the information that we present. But there are a couple of slides that are solely projections and there are other information that's already have been audited and is factual, but the projections are just our best estimate based on the research and the information that we currently have. But again, as we get new information, we'll update the projections. Some of you have already asked some questions and we've seen a lot of things in the media as well as social media, so we want to try to address some of those now. Does the city have a thirty million dollar deficit? The answer to that is no. The city does not have a deficit, uh, deficit at all in fact. However, our fund balance, which is similar to a personal savings account, has significantly decreased over the past few years. Where there be cuts to police and fire services, the reason why we put that up there is because initially, I think someone sent us some information about a report about twenty-seven or thirty police officers being, uh, cut or laid off. That's not true. Every department will have cuts, including police and, uh, fire, but from what I've seen thus far, you're looking at about ten to fifteen positions in police, maybe five to ten in fire. And some of those positions are not actual people. It's just base that we currently have. So we just want to make sure that we stick to the facts. Not saying that it won't be fifteen. That's just an estimate. It could be fifteen, could be sixteen, could be ten, could be nine, but definitely not twenty-seven. When did the fund balance, uh, begin to decline? According to what we have, uh, the significant decline started in two thousand twenty-three. How much money does the city currently have? The city has approximately twenty million dollars with about eight million dollars of that restricted for specific use. Uh, we have a state grant that is supposed to go towards a judicial center as well as affordable housing. So of that twenty million dollars, about eight million dollars cannot be used for our regular operations. So that leaves us with about twelve million dollars total. This, uh, chart is a little hard to read on this site, but if you have your phones available, you can go to the website. This shows our cash and investment balance and it starts with two thousand nineteen. So if you look at the far left, that two thousand nineteen number is one hundred thirteen million, three hundred twenty-three thousand, six hundred eighty dollars. So in two thousand nineteen, the reason why we started with two thousand nineteen is because that's what the local government commission had asked us to start because that was pre-COVID. We wanted to make sure that we showed a, a pretty good picture of what a normal year would look like. So in a normal year, that's where we were. In two thousand twenty, we dropped down to about a hundred and eight million and then in two thousand twenty-one, we were back into a hundred and twenty-one million because during that because during that COVID year, a lot of organizations just started saving because we were going through something that we'd never experienced before. I know I have never experienced a pandemic in my life. I don't know about you all, but we just started to save and save because we just didn't know what the bar was going to hold. I would like to note that during that time, the city of Rocky Mountain did not lay off anyone. There were a lot of organizations throughout the states, throughout the world, that sent people home at that point in time. The city of Rocky Mountain, not only did we not lay anybody off during that period, we kept people paid during the entire time. So I think that's something to important, important to note. As you look down, my, my, my laser doesn't work on the screen, but if you look down where you see the significant drop, that stock's right in two thousand twenty-three and then the last point on that slide is two thousand twenty-five office. So where did it, where did the money go? That's a lot of questions that a lot of people are asking. According to what we know today, our total expenses for the last several years averaged around two hundred and forty million dollars per year. In two thousand twenty-three, there was a jump to three hundred million dollars per year. That jump largely had to do with personnel costs. During that time, we increased staffing, not just the amount of people, but the amount that we pay people. That number increased. So on the years prior to two thousand twenty-three, our staffing cost was around seventy million. In two thousand twenty-three, it went up to ninety-four and then up to ninety-eight is where we are today. So right around a hundred million in our staffing cost. The biggest increase, however, was in our capital and debt services. That went up from twenty-six million to sixty-seven million in one year, starting in two thousand twenty-three.
Mr. Daniels, if we could, if we could go to the capital debt service of the increase and in where we are today with our cash, what, what impact did that have on our cash over the two years of, of the reduction in you, in previous slide that you showed? It's my understanding we did about a hundred and six million dollars worth of purchases and capital outlays. Is that correct?
That is correct. During that time, we paid for a lot of heavy duty equipment, fire trucks, public works trucks. I think the city also made some lampers during that time and a large part of that was cash. That's correct.
So, so of that, how, how much of it was cash that we're, we're on?
Cheryl, maybe that may be a finance question. Cheryl, do you have that information available?
I don't have it in front of me. I don't, yes.
I, I know.
That's something that we could put on the website for our, you know, for.
I think it's important to know that we did, we, we, instead of financing a lot of this, we paid out of the cash. And it's just like, it's just like each one of us, if we go and make a big purchase, whether it be a vehicle or a house, we typically get financing. Where, where the cash is, a big portion of it has gone, is where about sixty million, sixty million dollars of it went to these big capital purchases as opposed to finance. And where we are right now is a cash flow issue. And please correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong. And, and that includes everything from what has been mentioned, the fire trucks. And when we, if y'all recall, we've, we had issues with not having operable fire trucks and trash trucks. In fact, we went through a period where we were unable to collect trash. And then we also, I think we had to borrow a trash truck. So this council was in a predicament. We had to go and, and buy these large trucks. And you know, you don't go just buy a fire truck. You have to go and, and it's, it's specially outfitted for Rocky Mountain. It takes twenty-four to thirty-six months, is my understanding. I could be off on math. And so, you know, there's some big purchases that we had to do and complete for, for the life and safety of the citizens of Rocky Mountain. And I just want to be clear that a large portion of that cash was, was with the capital outlays when probably it should have been financed, quite honestly. And then, yes, we did go through some property acquisitions, whether it be the three thirty-six, which is the land out there on ninety-five, where they go for the new exit, or we purchased a lot of property in downtown Rocky Mountain. We've done outfit to, to various buildings, whether it be here or at, well, even fire station number two. I think that's eleven million dollars for fire station number two that we just opened a month ago. And that was eleven point five million dollars. We, you know, and then we have property surrounding that. And then in addition, we've recently purchased some property off of Sunset right next to that three thirty-six is because the plans, we need, we need another fire station, again, for life and safety, along with some a substation for, for electricity. So it's, you know, I want to assure the public, yes, we have a cash flow issue, but it's not like we were going out spending money for frivolous things. I mean, there, we can, we can probably debate a lot of the things that the money was spent on. But I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention because I think it's important to know that because I think, you know, a lot of people, including myself, like where in the hell did all this money go? And great question. And we, we've asked for detail and, and I want to, I want to touch on Ms. Spivey. She came, how long you been here? Two and a half months or two months?
Almost three.
Three months.
She started July second.
So within two months, she had, you know, there's a lot going on here. And then she was able to bring this to the attention, I think. I know I received a call from Manager Daniels three weeks ago informing me of the issue. And I think you contacted each council person. And then we had to come together, which is kind of where we are tonight. And I say that because we have had issues with our finance staff. We've had, we've had very seasoned finance staff for many, many years, leave for various reasons. And when our finance director left and went to a neighboring town and soon after, a lot of, a lot, three to five, I'm not exactly sure how many left. And it really decimated that department down there. We still have good people down there. But right now, Ms. Spivey's having to come in, not only be a finance director, but she's also having to do the day-to-day work. So that's why when we say this is a fluid thing going on right now, she and her staff and even bringing in some, some temporary staff right now are working day and night to try to get us answers. So I want to be clear with that. It's not that we're trying to stonewall. It's that when she's out there working, because she's working on two audits right now. And I'll, I'll just leave it there, but I wanted, I wanted to stop on that capital debt and service and make those comments. Sorry for interrupting you.
No, no, you're fine. I will say that you are correct on the, the lead time for equipment. Because, you know, during my time as assistant, I was involved with like operations. So I know it takes, with fire trucks, anywhere from two to three years to get those trucks. And I do, it's my understanding that when those cash purchases were made, they were made because we got a discount for it. We're using cash at that point in time. And then also with the public works utility trucks, they don't take necessarily three years, but they do have a long lead time. I would say those are about anywhere from nine to eighteen months on those. So I, I do think that the decision was, were made trying to have a savings on the upfront cost as well as trying to get those things in because when there were talks of potential tariffs and things of that sort, we didn't know where prices were going to be. So when you had a deal and you knew what the price was, we knew that everything was going to be going up. So I do know that is a fact. I think you mentioned something about Cheryl and her staff. We still have some vacancies in finance. We are, you're correct, we're currently doing our audit that is mandated by the state, which used to be due October thirty-first, which is now going to be due December, December thirty-first of this year. Last year, the audit was several months late. And when we're building the budget, the budget is based off of the audit being complete. But this previous year, when I became manager, the audit was not complete when we were trying to put together the budget. But moving forward, under my administration, my goal is to make sure that the audit is number one, turned in on time and that the budgeting process starts early during the year as well.
Mr. Manager, I just want to say, I just want to say, we were not silent in council meetings about these asset acquisitions. Just that early council person, maybe not all at one time, but over a period of time, we asked, Mr. Manager, can we afford this? Should we look at alternatives? And we were assured that yes, we can afford it. That message was, was given on a number of occasions.
Just want to be clear, you're not talking about me.
We're talking about the period of twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four.
Thank you. Thank you for that addition. Moving right along to our, our next slide, which this is our general funds. So our general funds are the departments that are, are non-enterprise, non-business type. So your Parks and Recreation Department, your, your Public Works for the most part, police, fire. These are the funds that are considered general fund for North Carolina local governments. The fund balance again is our savings account. So if you look back, the far left bar is twenty, the year twenty-twenty. And our unassigned fund balance, which unassigned means this is the money that we can use freely. We have more fund balance, but some of that fund balance is restricted. So that meaning that it has to be used for a specific purpose or it's already uncovered. So in twenty-twenty, our unassigned fund balance, so this is the money we had access to, the city had approximately sixteen million. In the next year, two thousand twenty-one, eighteen million. In two thousand twenty-two, twenty million. In two thousand twenty-three, eighteen million. And then in fiscal year twenty-four, six point five million. And this was brought up, I don't know if any of you followed our budgeting process this year, but this was brought to the attention that our fund balance had dripped below our city policy. So the city policy, we have an internal policy in which we must keep about ten percent in our fund balance. And then the state general rule depends, and it varies from city to county, but the typical thing over the past few years has been eight percent. But the city has a policy that we're supposed to keep more than, more than that general rule of eight percent. So the city has an internal policy of ten percent. We were below that. And we won't know where we are for twenty twenty-five until we complete this year's audit. This next slide shows our unassigned fund balance across all accounts. So this includes our enterprise funds. When I say enterprise funds, I'm referring to the business account. So your utility bills, your water, your sewer, your electric. Across all funds for unassigned fund balance, we have a total in twenty-twenty of around seventy-one million. Then for the next few years, it's over around that. In two thousand twenty-three, we were in fifty-eight million. And then in two thousand twenty-four, which is the last audit that we have, we were at forty-four million across all accounts. And again, I know you can't see these numbers on some of these slides, but they will be available online. In fact, they're already online. Cash balance as of September twenty-ninth. Again, this is a movement target. It fluctuates from day to day, but over the next couple of days, it's been around twenty million. And this was as of, I think the twenty-ninth was Monday. This is the slide that I was talking about earlier. That is a projection. Again, this is not concrete, but the first night that we did this presentation, we tried to clean it up a little bit and round off to make the numbers a little bit more easy to understand as well as kind of color coded. So if you look at the top, you'll see in September, we have a cash balance of about nineteen million. And then if you add all the, the blue numbers, which is where our revenue, that accounts for our property taxes, sale taxes, electric, gills, gas sales, as well as our water sewer. When you add that all together, you'll have forty million. Then our expenditures each month range around twenty million. October, you'll see that there's a big drop. October is because each month, from payroll standpoint, it takes us about eight point one, eight point two millions for payroll. If you're a twenty-six pay-per-year organization like the city of Rocky Mountain is, there are two months within a twelve-month calendar year that employees get paid three times in one month. For us, it happens in October. So that's why you see a larger dip in October. That is the presentation. Again, we do have all of these slides available online at rmfinancialoutlook.com. But I'll entertain any question that councilor will have to cast.
Well, before we go to the questions, I do want to, my opening statement, I was talking about our, our the balance sheet that, that we have not received. And then over the weekend, and I, and I can guarantee you every council member and mayor have been, this has been consuming us since we found out. And over the weekend, I was thinking, going back and really questioning at the balance sheet if I had ever seen one or had one, because sometimes you get information if you don't remember and I've, I've asked around. And then it finally dawned on me is when I was looking into our yearly audit. We get this yearly, it's presented to us. And then if you go in there, it's, I don't know how many pages this is, but it's a lot. There's a note, note section in this year would happen to be included. It does list what we, what we have is bank balance and does list the Northern Capital Management Trust, which is kind of like a savings account. In that, it only lists where you end June thirtieth each year of that audit. Problem there, and I don't know about you, but many of us, I, I like to see previous years, previous months, year to date, you know, year to date last year, things of that nature. And I've asked, in fact, I asked Ms. Spivey yesterday, and I don't know if we're going to do it, but in future audits that we get to list, like I went through a spreadsheet and created, going all the way back to two thousand thirteen, that would be the closest thing to a balance sheet that, that I've seen since I've been on this council. Not an excuse. It's just, I'm, I'm trying to tell you where my head is. I can't speak for the others. But and then when it's in this format, it's clear beginning twenty-three where things are going down dramatically.
Okay, we pulled these. Y'all can be going around. If you have not turned yours in, we'll be collecting them. One question we had is who was the mayor of Brooktown while the previous city manager was hired?
Uh, in twenty, I, I preceded Councilman Harris. And then before that was Councilman TJ Wong.
Okay. Couple of that. Does the city council hire the city manager and what is their yardstick of qualities that they use? The yardstick when it comes to qualities?
Yes, we hire the city manager. We, we hire, I mean, we're responsible city manager, city clerk and the city attorney. They're, they're the three people that report to the city council. What are the qualifications? I mean, you want someone that has experience within city government. You want someone that typically most people have gone to school of government type, like UNC Chapel Hill. Most of them have master's degrees. They, yeah. Qualified people.
The greetings to managers and, and Manager Daniels is not who I'm referring to. The city employed, I believe, consultant firm to helping gathering resumes and helped us. I wasn't on the council and the second person in, in the past was hired. But there was extensive reliance on the consultant firm hired to help with a lot of due diligence, screening of applicants and a lot of information shared by the consultant company to the council to consider the list of candidates that they have proposed.
Yes, I'm like Tom. I know when we first got on council, it was already, the firm was already picked. I think we interviewed four or five candidates. You go through their intents, ask some questions. They came in, I think we done in person, and maybe two of them. So that's how we picked the first time with the first city manager. I know with city manager Daniels, it was different. When you look at the box, we knew he checked most of the boxes. So we didn't go through the hiring firm. We didn't waste taxpayers' dollars. I think we, from the mayor down, the council agreed that it was time to make him the city manager. And it was a great decision we made. So I think learning from the first time, what we were presented with, you had to, your options, you couldn't go outside and you picked from what you had. And that's what we went with and what, who we thought was the best candidate at that time. So we learned from it.
This one looks at the history. Did any finance staff reach out to council members during these last two years that you've marked as concerns?
None. No.
No.
What happens if the measures put forth don't work? In other words, what's the worst-case scenario? We're referring to what we're projecting, I guess, what we're putting in place.
I'm going to turn that over to the manager.
Well, I like to have a positive outlook, but I would imagine that the worst-case scenario would be that we're not able to have any cost-saving measures. Our revenue don't, doesn't make our projections, and possibly the state would have to come in and take over for a while, which might they've done at other jurisdictions in North Carolina. Not every state has a local government commission. The local government commission is, provides oversight. Cheryl and I have been in communications with them throughout this entire process. We actually reached out to them proactively. They did not reach out to us, we reached out to them that informed of our situation. If you look back at Cheryl's background, she was actually the deputy director of the LGC for the Fiscal Management Division back in the early, I mean, late nineties and early two thousand. So we do not feel in that we're in jeopardy of being taken over. We just know that we have a difficult financial situation in the coming months, coming years, that we have to get out of. But I think once we're done with our operational efficiency plan, it's actually going to make us more nimble and better. I feel like as a whole, the city has just grown too fast, and we hadn't had the revenue to keep up with it. But I think this is an opportunity for us to level safely, get back on the right track.
And go ahead, Jason, that's yours.
The city over the last few years outran its headlights in terms of spending. We have a good source of income or revenue. We just spend too much money. And efforts will be made to look at all areas of expenses in order to improve what we are presently in. And more importantly, we are committed to make changes, not just in the near term, but in the long term. You want us to make changes, and I assure you, I'm going to work hard that we can better control our expenses as we plan for the future.
One of the, one of the areas you mentioned was the land. Someone asked, what is our plan with that land? If we have anything to speak to that?
Well, we have multiple land. So I was seeing you're talking about this land off ninety-five to three thirty-six. That's actively being marketed through the Chamber of Commerce. It's a prime piece of property. I think it was, the financing was for, what, five?
Fifty-nine months.
Fifty-nine months, thank you. So right now, we paid about, I think we put about one point two, one point six million dollars in cash for that land. It would cost us right at fifteen point five million dollars for all that land. And it's being marketed right now. We do have options on seventeen or nineteen of the acres. I can't remember the exact amount. Those options, they're through January, I believe. Please don't quote me on that, I went from memory, which is sometimes dangerous. And that is a wonderful opportunity for our community. Our community cannot grow because we can't go through annexation. And where we got there, because where we got there with that, is there, the Carolina's Gateway Partnership, which is our economic development team, went through and gathered the options for that land, which in other words, they got all the landowners who agreed to sell their land in, for a certain price, and they had a certain amount of time to option that land to go and buy that land, that's the best way I can explain it. Someone might be able to explain it better. But after, and that expired in December of twenty-three or four, twenty-three. And so we had to act quickly, and we made the decision to go through and purchase that, and we did finance it. And I think that's going to be an awful opportunity, because we'll generate sales tax, we'll generate property tax, it'll be an opportunity for electric, water, sewer, and then it'll also create jobs. I know there's been a lot of questions around that. Is there a casino going there? No. State of Carolina will not allow one, even if we wanted one. But there's economic development, and there's some, and I don't know where those, I know I've seen somewhere, even maybe in your office, but I know at one point downstairs, we had a rendering of what could be down there. We do have land elsewhere. We have land downtown Rocky Mountain. We've been acquiring land for the potential hotel. We've been acquiring land for parking. We've been acquiring land for a judicial center. And so there is a lot of land that has been purchased by the city of Rocky Mountain. Again, adjacent to that three thirty-six on Sunset, there's land for a fire station. And there's land, and behind the fire station, plans are to put electrical substation of some sort, especially I can explain it. So I'm not sure if there, if that answers the person's question, but there are plans. And I guess probably the question everybody has, what do you do if, from the previous question, if you, you're going to do something? We're actively looking. We need to sell some assets, we need some cash. There's no doubt about it.
Mr. Harris?
Thank you. I've had a number of people say, Tom, why don't y'all just sell that property out of an old carriage? We can do that. We probably have about six million dollars in our cash in that total acreage, one and a half or so for the initial purchase, and several other parcels had to be acquired. We could sell it, and we do. We get five, six, seven, eight million dollars over and above what we have. That's a one-time gain, so to speak, but the long-term potential benefit may not be there. So we got to look at long-term, what is in the best interest? And we determined a year or two from now that we must market that property. Will that or going not? But right now, as Councilman Dohtrich alluded, the future benefit is quite high. Yes, it's going to take time, but it's a prime piece of real estate. And to keep residential property owners from continuing to pay the bulk of the property tax, we want others to step in with commercial development, the hopes go out there, hotel, motel, a theme park, water park, there are a lot of ideas. A lot of retail sales with new shopping, et cetera. Give us a little time on this, but our focus right now is the challenge we have, and all of us are committed.
Thank you. So one city manager, maybe I'll speak to this, mentioned, how did we operate in a negative for two years? And was there not monthly reports to speak to that? But I think you spoke to that before.
I can't speak to about previous administration, but I will say that from an operational level, North Carolina does not allow cities to operate in a negative. And what typically happens at the end of the year is if you have operated like on a month-to-month basis in a negative, then you transfer your fund balance. So at the end of the year, when you do year-in, close-out, you close out the year in the black. Cheryl, I'm going to defer to you to put that in technical terms.
Referring to, we have numerous funds, and some of our funds have operated better financially than others. So at the end of the year, we combine them, yeah, they all get combined, and we end up with a total amount of fund balance with what we report to our government commission. This year, we're starting out with less than we have in the past. So that's where the changes are being made, so that we can maintain what we have, and we have a plan to rebuild.
And the other thing that I will mention is that, you know, we just had a budget process that took place, and the budget was adopted sometime in late June for the new fiscal year, which July one. Being that we're in this new situation, uncharted territories, if you will, what I plan to do is present a revised budget that addresses our current financial situation.
This may speak just to government chain of commands, but I'll read the whole thing. What are the chain of commands? Who approves financial documents? Once, in this case, they're saying the city manager has approved or signed. And then if I go ahead and say, what is the role of the city mayor? Basically, who does the checks and balances for the financial status of it?
I'll take a stab from our governmental standard, and then council, feel free to chime in. So earlier, I think Councilmember Dohtrich mentioned that the city operates under the council manager form of government. In North Carolina, that is what majority of cities our size operate at under. And across the nation, that is generally the preferred form of government. Council manager, under council manager form of government, the council hires the manager, as well as the city clerk and the town attorney. From a financial aspect, each city has their own internal policies. But for the city of Rocky Mountain, contracts above ninety thousand have to go to the board. That's our internal policy. So any contract above ninety thousand has to get the council's approval. Budget amendments go to the council, but on a day-to-day, departmental aspects, small contracts, go to the department head, but everything goes through finance. So the checks and balances are, you have a finance staff, you have a city manager, and then if it's above the city manager's threshold, then it goes to council.
From our perspective, all council members rely on the accuracy of the information provided, and we want it timely.
I've seen stuff on social media, so this question, I did some extra research, was aware of most of it, but I wanted to confirm because I just definitely got off my memory. According to school of government, and I read the whole thing, essentially, the mayor resides over the council, and is essentially the head of, the face of the city. The council, we're in charge of general government, oversight of the city mainly. One of our main duties is to pass a balanced budget. And then, and I'm not reading everything, then if you go down to the city manager, and this is going to, Mayor Daniels hit on this, but the city manager is to prepare and submit annual budget capital program to this council. Annually submit to the council, make available to the public a complete report on the finances and administrative activities of the city as of the end of fiscal year. Make any other reports that the council may require concerning the operations of city departments, offices, agencies, such to, until this was printed a long time ago, to his direction and control. So I think it's important to remember that.
One question is basically about, we understand position cuts and all of that. What other such cuts are there going to be made that maybe you can speak to?
Well, we'll likely have a reduction in force that affects the employees. We'll present certain vacancies that we have. We're looking at any service contracts that we have that are non-essential. We'll look at either eliminating those or reducing those. There are some other things that we will be looking at with regard to benefits that employees get that are not mandatory or required by the state. Looking at either reducing or eliminating those. And then just looking at any other operational efficiencies that we could have throughout. Our goal, though, is to make sure that, other than the reduction in force, because we, you know, we have several citizens that are also employees, but the impact to the citizens that are not employees, we're trying to limit that as much as possible. So for example, if your garbage or recycle is picked up on a weekly basis, our goal is to try to maintain that same level of service. If you, police are still want to be routinely patrolling. If you call nine-one-one, the fire department and everybody else is still want to show up, it's just as they would. So we don't plan on shutting down any of our essential services, but there are some programs that we will have to reevaluate and/or eliminate altogether, but they won't be deemed what we call essential.
Right, the manager Daniels, but we adopt every year a five-year capital improvement plan, and there are going to have to be some major capital improvements that we're going to have to look at postponing. I hope to, I hope to see our city being more aggressive and seeking various grants. We have a lot of infrastructure needs forthcoming, and I hope we can take advantage of what's available. But we have got to be more involved, grant requesting. And manager Daniels, you might be able to speak to that, but we got to look at other sources of revenue, grants being one of them. Or we're going to have to perhaps delay or postpone for a long time some capital.
I'm glad you mentioned that, Councilmember Harris. I know this is the listening session for wards, I think, five, six, and seven. So in your ward, Councilmember Harris, there's a pump station that is currently being renovated or replaced altogether. All of our current capital projects that we are actively working on, we will continue to work on those. The ones that are planned, that were planned for this year, we will likely be delaying those. That's a good point, you talk about capital projects. So the things that we're currently working on, the facts that we currently have, we're going to continue to work on those. They're the ones, the ones that have not already started. Those are the ones that could possibly be delayed to a future year, or just eliminated for quite some time. But we're trying to maintain our infrastructure, that's the main thing. And I know that's one that's specifically in your ward, so that's one that we have to finish. We can't, we can't leave it unfinished. So there'll be things like that, that we will continue to evaluate as time goes on. But again, if we're currently working on something, our goal is to finish, complete that project, but also look for other sources of revenue, like you mentioned, grants. And we're steadily pursuing those. We actually just received one just the other day for St. Topol Park, which is a five hundred thousand dollar grant. So we're still going to operate the city. We just have to tighten our belt on the finances and do a better job of reporting so that not only council could be aware, but the citizens can be aware as well.
And I think another thing is, we talked about today, with the city managers, talk about land. I know on Tom, that's in Ward Seven, we have about fifty-five acres the city purchased. We ought to be aggressive with this land. We got to find a way to see what we're going to do with this land. We've been buying all over Rocky Mountain, but we got to get aggressive with development. So I guess what we're doing the next few weeks, few months, we'll call a meeting with with Carolina Gateway Partnership to see what can we do to be very, very aggressive with this land that we have. And I get people talk about three-three-six, but there's several places in the city of Rocky Mountain, especially in Ward Seven, where we have blight areas. So we got opening a few weeks, what is it, Romdale? Romdale is coming. That's a development where we had some land that was just sitting there. So that'll also help. But we got to be aggressive with this land. We got to be aggressive with development, and we got to do it ASAP. We can't just continue to sit on it. We got to be aggressive and go get it while it's hot, and we got to go get it. So that's one way that we can get it. And reducing force is not going to always do it, always making, raising taxes is not going to get it when you got resources that'll make it happen. So I think we got to be aggressive with making it happen. And that's our approach, I think we've been meeting the last two weeks, Manager Daniels, about what can we do to be aggressive with getting the land off the city of Rocky Mountain. So that's another way, instead of just keep cutting employees and raising the taxes, that's the way we can make it happen.
So one overarching question is related to utility, the increase you spoke to earlier. And I'll just ask these real quick. Is the increase affect both residential and commercial and industrial? And will the increases sunset, or will it continue?
So the first part of that question is yes. It will impact industrial, commercial, industrial, I mean, industrial, commercial, and residential. Will it sunset? That depends. We have to see where we are with our projections. We don't anticipate, for example, that the gas will be very long, but on the electric side, it's just something that we have to... it's just something that we have to evaluate. So don't have a definitive answer for that yet. It, it really just depends on where our revenues and expenses are. But our goal is to try to maintain what we can. But I will say that the city had not adjusted electric rates since two thousand fifteen up until, till now. And on the gas side, I think it was around two thousand seventeen. So we really hadn't done the best job with keeping up with the market, and that's because we had what they call rate stabilization, rate stabilization funds to whenever the market adjusted, we'd use that to kind of keep the rates where they are. But now, in our current situation, we no longer have those funds available to stabilize the rates, so we got to kind of adjust as the market adjusts.
And to speak specific to that, so we're clear, who approves the utility rates increases in this particular increase? Is it a rate increase or is there something else that it speaks to?
So it's actually two. So we have a purchase gas agreement, that is something that is handled on administrative side. So when I say administrative, myself, finance, and the energy resources director. On the electric side, according to our policy and the mandates, that is, all of those rate adjustments will have to be approved by the city council.
I want to touch a little bit, and I'm not an expert by any means, and I might completely mess this up, but the PGA purchase gas agreement, I think one thing that we need to do a better job here at the city of Rocky Mount is, that's based on the market, it's based on, we do that at cost. I know we have some experts in here on this, but that need, we, that needs to be looked at monthly, if not quarterly. And again, to what city manager has articulated, that really needs to go up and down based on what the market is, because that, we, we sell that at cost, I believe, and we just make the money on the transportation piece. And I could be wrong with that, but you know, it's just like when you go to the gas station and fill up your car, you don't, you might not be paying the same thing you paid last week, you are this week, it's just based on the market. So just wanted to make that clear, and I might have murdered that whole one, and I'm looking at some people right now and I.
I say it was, it was close. What I, what I will say though, is that our neighbors on the region for the purchase gas agreement, they, just there is monthly. We have not done that, and that is, that's a fact, seeing he is not close to, around it.
We used to.
Oh, they used to. So we're, we'll be looking at other ways, and this is something that's new to me, because I'm, you know, I'm into this role, but we'll be looking at every avenue to make sure that we have enough revenue to cover our expenses.
I'm not sure we can speak to this yet, and I don't know the terminology as well, but did the independent audit include a management letter?
The independent audit includes a management letter.
Yes.
Each comprehensive audit report, after we approve it, is published online on the city's website as well as management letter. Isn't that correct, Manager Daniels?
Uh, that is correct, but just, just so you know, the twenty-five isn't done, it won't be done until hopefully, Cheryl, when you can get that new one done.
Before the first one in the year.
Okay, it'll be finished by the deadline, but the previous ones are online.
So I think this one really, if you can just speak to the parallels of how will city cut costs, and we already spoke to that, and at the same time increase revenue, if you can just, if you can elaborate.
The two revenue sources that we are currently exploring is the purchase gas agreement, which will mean about a twenty dollar increase for the typical residential home in Rocky Mount. And on the electric side, it will equate to about an eight dollar increase. So those are the only two revenue sources that we currently have. And then as we go through the budgeting process for the revised budget, as well as the upcoming fiscal year twenty-seven budget, we will have a good look at all of our revenues. But during the, the course of a year, once the budget has been adopted, you really don't have any source to adjust revenue. Now, hopefully a bunch of people move in the city, hopefully we get a bunch of business opening up, then we can get sale tax revenue, but what we're projecting is off of what we have now.
So one question that we've heard is how long will it take for us to get back on our feet and get back to those kind of projections, the randy day fund minimum?
Well, you, you can get a hundred million dollars over overnight. So, you know, it's going to take some time. Rough estimates, four or five years, that's just, just the truth. But that really just depends on the market, that depends on the development that we have coming, that then depends on what tax rate we set. I mean, there's a lot of variables, but you can lose money fast, it's hard to, to get it, get it back. So it's really just going to take us tightening up our belt again and just being very fiscally conservative, but still make sure that we do the things that make Rocky Mount unique. We still have to have programs for our, our youth, we still have to provide reasonable rates, we still have to have all the things that make this city a great city, a great city that people want to live in, but at the same time, we just have to do a better job with our finances. And that's not something that's going to be top-down, it's not going to come from me. I mean, I'm going to have my recommendations, it's my job as city manager and by law to be the budget manager and present a balanced budget to the board, but it's going to take everyone. It's going to take the citizens, they come up with ideas, it's going to take the council members, everybody's going to be in this together, and that's really the only way that we're going to recover. But to get a healthy fund balance, it's going to take several years.
Can you, acronyms is one of them, the LGC, what it means, and the fiscal year timing, how does that work for us as a city?
So LGC stands for Local Government Commission. They are the oversight board that oversees all of North Carolina's municipalities, which are cities, towns, villages, as well as counties. Fiscal year refers to the amount of time that we have in, in the year for our finances. I probably should let Cheryl answer this, but I know that the fiscal year starts on July one and it ends on June thirty. Is there anything else you'd like to add about fiscal year?
You have it.
I think we've spoken to this previously, what are the processes city councils doing now to help better monitor the spending? I think Mr. Harris has spoken to this at other times, some of the reports, maybe to remind you. Can anyone speak to what you've recently done that's going to help improve that?
Bottom line, Manager Daniels has hired an expert finance director.
He, I agree with that, but we're also going to be getting, any of us who, you know, have a business or have been in a business or been in management of some sort, we're going to ask for, we're going to get the monthly reports. And we've been assured we'll, we'll get those, and we received one the last week, yeah, last week. I'm getting weeks confused, today's Wednesday, I believe. So.
Just to piggyback on, on my statement, I previously said I relied on information being accurate and timely. And that's what I was referencing with Mr. Stadi and Manager Daniels. We're going to be getting accurate information to the best that we can, they can produce, projections on projections, but they also be timed.
The only thing that I'll add to that is not only will, will council get them, we anticipate posting everything online on that new website, which is par and financialoutlook.com.
I believe you spoke to this before, and I think I'm reading this right, why aren't taxpayers being asked to pay more before an independent audit is performed? And I think you spoke to when we actually, the tax rate is clicked, set at one point in time, maybe?
Yeah, the tax rate is set at adoption of the budget. Our current tax rate, I think, is sixty-two percent on the hundred dollar valuation, but that's set annually.
So it's nothing, to your, to your point, there's nothing you can do to tax rate until it comes around?
That is my understanding. Cheryl, would you like to add to that?
You're correct.
A lot of these are overlapping, let's see. Are cuts going to be made to the redevelopment plans such as May Goreon project, restaurant loans, et cetera, instead of cuts to essential services like police and fire?
Everything will be evaluated.
Anyone want to fill in the gap, try to find something new?
You know, can't say, you know, this is not an easy thing to do. You can't add to, we, we got to look at everything. I mean, there's not, there's nothing off the table. And it's, and it don't, we don't take delight, we, and, and also want to add to the, to what, the cuts in staffing, RIFs, I'm not sure what the name, but no one from the mayor to the council to staff, that's not an easy thing for any of us. And I, and, you know, in fact, that, I wish we didn't have to do that, but we, we don't have an option at all, because we understand, as I said in my opening statement, it impacts lives, it impacts people. And it's just a sad, sad thing.
One of the things that I like to mention when you talk about the, the RIFs, the production in force, it's my understanding that some of the positions that we currently have on city staff were not properly authorized by council. So those are the ones that we'll be starting with, evaluating, those positions that were currently hired that were not authorized by council.
I want to encourage those of you here and those of you who are viewing via the television or computer, if you have any ideas on what we can do to increase revenue. And or I couldn't hear what the response was.
No, I was asking for ideas.
Let me, let me, let me finish first and then. We're, you know, we're answering questions right now, but, you know, if, if you have an idea on cost savings, or if you have an idea of, you have the city owns this particular piece of property or whatever, if you have people looking to come and live in our city, encourage them to go.
Yeah, last one really is just, this is kind of the wrap-up question, how do we move Rocky Mount forward and what is the reshaping going to look like? How do we reshape our image from here?
We got some hard work to do, but I think the team that's in place, the mayor and the council and staff, we are committed to get this ship back where we need it to be. And we are going to work hard and our aim is for you in a year or so, be pleased with the efforts that we hope to make and will make in making this city a good place to call home. Commitment is unified, I think. We got to have the plan, we got to execute, and I feel like we can probably execute.
Excellent. Like, if you want to close us out, what do you think?
So I guess echo what Councilman Harris said is it's going to take everybody, I think, working together. Got to do a lot of listening in this season, in this time. We don't have all that, we don't, but I think where we are has happened for a reason to, I guess, the last year, council has been moving this one, I must say, no matter how it looks on the outside, we've been kind of getting it together, working together, making it happen. I think this will make us even stronger to come back with a plan, we have a plan, and we're not, I guess, we're in bad shape, but we're not as bad as you think. So if that was the case, the MPC would have took us over right then. But I think the state ought to come out, we have to wait till that's finished, to know where we went wrong with the hundred million dollars that's gone, and then to tell us. But I think the, the moving forwards for Rocky Mount is working together and moving this one and coming up with a plan and sticking to the plan, and I think that's the way we move forward.
Can we go back to his last question? He asked if, if we, do we have a budget for a marketing manager that can bring a hundred million dollars to the city? Do we have a budget for marketing manager? Because the marketing manager is what brings revenue to the city.
Okay, I, I hear you, and great question. We, we do have, we've got the Chamber of Commerce we work with, we've got the.
Marketing manager, not the Chamber of Commerce, marketing manager.
Understand.
That brings revenue.
I, I understand.
Let me cut you off, sir.
Okay, and I understand, and I appreciate it. We, we have organizations that we work with, there's things that we need to, such as Carolina Gateway Partnership, the chamber, and then we have a downtown manager. We also, like everything that was said earlier, we need to reevaluate. And this, this is actually a, you know, I, I think Councilman Javaris Walker hit on it, this, this is an opportunity to reset the city and to look at priorities and look where we're going. It's a, it's a horrible way to do it, horrible way to do it. But at this point, we don't have, we don't have a choice. But I, I will say, I, I think I can, I'm not going to speak for those here, but I'm confident the rest of the council, reach out, reach out to us. You know, if you've got, if you've got a question, ask the question. If we can answer it, we, we will. If we don't know the answer, we will find out. We recognize the hardship this is having on everyone, and we recognize the, I would imagine, the emotions everyone is going through, through anger and everything else. And I personally appreciate each and every one of you taking the time out of your schedule to come here, and we will get through this.
What about that bear cat?
Just to be clear, all the questions that we have here that we pulled together, they will, if they weren't answered tonight, will be directed directly to council for follow-up. And, yes.
Somebody said about the bear cat?
Yeah.
We're trying to sell it right now. You know somebody want to buy, I think we're reaching out to different cities to try to sell it back.
Tell Trump, nobody.
No, but I'll, yeah, what I'll say is, he's referring to somewhat of a, like a military style vehicle that the police department owns, and so one of our things that we're doing from a staff level is assessing all of our capital equipment that we have, and we may be able to sell equipment, things that we got that probably we wanted, but not necessarily need, so we'll be assessing that, and this is something that local governments do all the time. So again, when I tell you that we're going to leave no stone unturned, that's what we mean, we're going to be looking at staff, we're going to look at programs, we're going to look at equipment, but at the same time, we don't want to get rid of something that we desperately need, so that, that's what we'll be doing over the next four weeks. But there are some things that we got over the last few years that are probably not used heavily, so we'll look at that. And there's also some vehicles, because we have a rental agreement with a lot of our light duty vehicles, so if they're not heavy use, we're going to look at returning those as well. So we're, we're looking at every avenue possible.
Like, thank you everyone for coming tonight, and appreciate it, and all the other answers will go directly to council. You, I'm here, if I didn't see you. Go ahead, sir.
I just wanted to leave tonight, I empathize with y'all. This has been a couple of tough weeks, and I really want you to know, it's been, it's been hard. And I know a lot of you, and, and I know everybody is in the money. But one thing that I'm looking forward to, and I'm hoping that when we get the auditors' report, that they're going to present the facts, et cetera, but they've been through this before, they might have ideas that we might not have even considered about how we can perhaps streamline our operations. So as Manager just said, no stone is going to be unturned. Again, we have council meetings, if you have a, a good idea on cost savings or revenue, go and speak to the council, we'd love to hear from you. Thank you so much for being here, we value you, and we look forward to working together to make this city what we all want it to be.
Thank you.
Sure, go anytime. Yeah.
Not, not bad.
Mark, how are you?
Hey, hey, great, good to see you.
Good to see you, you doing okay?
Guys rolling our thoughts in prayer. I mean, kinda got a little, little bit of a problem, hey, we'll get through it.
Yeah.
I have.
Okay, y'all, congratulations, another good meeting, it, it's been a forty-five minutes earlier than the one last night.
Mr. Dancy, thanks again.
Yes, sir.
We sure tonight, for you tonight?
Yes, yes.
I would like to see those questions, written or not, as written, just ping, 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 right, 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 right.
It should be, I didn't get, I didn't get, I'll turn in later, man. Didn't get it in tonight.
You know, this bathroom, go out the door, yeah, out the door, make a little, right here, right.
Thanks.
You definitely get a top of it?
It's online, it's not a deep roof.
Uh, on, on, yeah, that's, that's, yeah.
On, on line, yes, sir. Appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, y'all, this scene tonight is different from what you do here, well, like I said, we give them what y'all can see, because your father has been looking at videos, not videos, but live recordings, as I have been videoing in the city. I've seen how they, uh, uh, the council, each one, what they did, I was here, and um, the night is totally different from where they had, I had a lot of doctors talking about, uh, he, he always talked about Trent Perry, but there wasn't one when it came to me, um, to the city manager, but the whole deal, the whole mission has been, the whole mission has been to shut down Andre Knight and Ruben Blackwell, the years before, Richard John got him, the mission has been to shut down Ruben Blackwell and Andre Knight. It backtired on them, uh, it was, uh, all council, the rest of the three, Andre, Ruben, and Ricky, they had their number, these bonders, they had, uh, uh, do whatever he wanted to do. They talking about the X question, yeah, they might ask questions, but Andre Knight, Ruben, asked all the questions, and every time Andre asked questions that I'd expect for all of them, hell, I even spoke to every public member that's about, and, and talked about, he said he would get back, get in court, go over to Kane County, and Tom Harris, still, um, he start asking questions, and he would be a disrespected, as he liked him, and that's when he came on board, and, um...
Thanks, sir.
That's when he came on board, and, um, came on board, and, and, so, real, these projects were not the ones, were not the funding, now, the question was asked, the mayor podium was, the mayor has direct contact with the, uh, with the city manager, the mayor podiums have direct contact with the city, with the city manager, the mayor podium, they took the agenda in the committee of the whole meeting, so therefore, Andre Knight, he was the mayor podium, asked, um, to, um, be able to do it twice, and because, uh, the over four, in the majority, did not wanna do that, but then when, uh, CJ Walker, uh, got the, uh, mayor podium, the next time when his end of the year was up, the majority of years, they allowed him to go twice, after him fall apart, last judge, after last judge fall apart, uh, Tom Harris, who is still the current, uh, mayor podium, until the end of this year, uh, since he do, uh, begin of the, first of the year, so, uh, all of y'all, who wants to come in now, where the hell were y'all at, where the meetings were going on? What y'all need to do, is just sit back and listen, because you're a distraction, when you throwing out bullshit, uh, ignorant ass comments, you're throwing out, you need to let them do their job, yeah, you're right, let them do their job, that they, that, that, that they, no, some of you to do, do their job, and some are doing, but you gotta know who is in control of what, the council is not the day-to-day operation, I don't know why y'all wanna continue to talk about the damn council, yeah, they oversee the city manager, how many more damn fans they gotta feed them, but they do not run the day-to-day operation, but y'all need to understand, that we need to get off of this bullshit of the city council, they have a role to play, but the city, is the one that runs the ship, you hear me? How many more damn fans, the new city manager, they've got to tell y'all, y'all are in there for six to ten, look at all the, they could come here, so, in certain meetings, talking about, uh, they ain't got a damn thing to do, uh, uh, like, they got a damn thing to do, stick right here, it started in twenty-three, when the new city manager came, the, the previous city manager came on, so stick with the damn fact, if they don't stick with the damn fact, don't come on my damn page with no ignorant ass comments, because I'm not, I'm not gonna allow it, I will block you, because I'm tired, I've been, I've been coming to these meetings longer than any council member on this council right now, so I know where they came from, I know where the hell, uh, Andre has, who's them, carried it back in, and what they have to do with us and them, this damn city council room gets to be filled up with white folks coming up here, because they were mad as hell because it had, uh, four black majority, and it really pissed them off when they got the supermajority, when you got two more blacks, you got five damn blacks on the floor right now, and two whites, and a mate, but they have not acted as the supermajority, because it was four against the majority, so therefore, uh, um, therefore, y'all need to know what the deal is, go back and look at the videos, of the meetings, of the panels, get your damn facts straight, and then come back on my, open air, I don't wanna hear a damn thing nobody gotta say, because I've been here, I've been videoing the meetings, the nineties, uh, uh, long before the pandemic, they had to come up to part all these places, I've been videoing these all around the county, uh, and then when the pandemic came, uh, uh, that's when they got online, so, until y'all go back and scroll the minutes, look at previous videos, I've been coming to the meetings, I know the deal is, I can challenge all of y'all, but you not, don't come on my damn page with no ignorant ass comments, they just be the first and follow warning, because I ain't got time for distractions myself, or you're distracting me when I gotta go back and comment, and or delete your damn comments, like I'm gonna do with Mike, y'all to come to the meetings, but I told y'all over here, the committee of the whole meeting is where you work at the, a regular support meeting, a several part meeting, you just get, they just go through the motions of, uh, holding itself, but you get to see them cash out, uh, uh, I, 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 you get to see, uh, uh, them cash out, see, this right here, this stuff ain't talking about the night, they talking about any committee of the whole meeting, go to the next committee of the whole meeting, sit in there, you can't see anything, but sit in there, you'll hear, you would have done heard some of this stuff that they talking out there, because when Elton Daniels came on in April, then he start, uh, 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 doing his job, then he start reporting to the council, this stuff ain't new, it's just that they have, uh, the other week, they had a meeting on a Monday, and I think they was trying to do it all on that, where they, where the last council meeting, they had, um, whatever they said, and, um, it was, uh, uh, to that Monday, and then they end up meeting at Tuesday, they end up meeting at Wednesday, so they have talked about this, well, folks, y'all, y'all, uh, we cannot allow the distraction, uh, what needs to happen is, like, they need to unify, come together, everybody need to own up to what they have done, how they allow people to, to just do what he wants to do, because they had the majority, uh, uh, he didn't have to respond to Andre and Ruben, because the other one sat there, so now, when, 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 again, when he respect D Whiteley and Tom Harris, and see, I, I like it, uh, Tom Harris was on the council, he's a retired banker, so he knew all the questions to ask, he, he was asking some questions, I was in there, he was asking questions, but it took a while before, like I said, he became the mayor podium, so he stepped there generally, he met the, uh, city manager, when you the mayor podium, you get to meet with the city managers, you, you, the mayor podium steps there generally, so learn the process. I told y'all that after three o'clock on Monday, past Monday, I got time, I, uh, I had a service for my dad on Sunday evening from five o'clock to six o'clock, non-traditional service for his homeboys, and then on Monday, put him in the ground at three o'clock, so now I got time, because I am sick and tired of ignorant, racist, white folks attacking my leaders, and I'm sick of ignorant, safe Negroes, who, uh, 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 validate their ignorant methods, we gotta change this black culture, sit around with that folk, just create our leadership, you don't see white folk doing that, they ain't together, but they don't do it in the public, uh, 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 Robert Davis, National Commissioner, he don't give a damn about, uh, 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 National, he's don't, but you don't see them out in the damn front, uh, but, but it's known, because Robert Davis, same one there, uh, 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 for cushion the, the merger of, in this town, in this town, it's purpose, sending the chair back, y'all need to know, know the damn history, because I've been out here a long time, not putting too much to work, fighting some of the same battles from, from back then in the nineties, and then folk come on, these new folk come on, because they don't act like they gonna figure something out, but you, but you got a problem with, uh, uh, because I say, I've been out here since the eighties, Bronson Hill, and Lee and my Smith, you know, every inch of our city, every day, uh, 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 talking about it, I was, it was funny to me, because I knew one thing, I knew one thing, going back, so that's what has happened here, they have been trying to get rid of Andre and Ruben, especially the Andre, for twenty damn years, and it has not worked, so I am ready, so y'all have a good night.